Good evening. My name is Deb Brinkman. I'm president of the League of Women Voters, St. Louis Park. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, St. Louis Park, I would like to welcome the candidates, the audience, and our TV viewers on Channel 17 to our school board forum tonight. Tonight's candidate forum will continue to run on Civic Channel 17 until the general election on November 5th. Candidates tonight are going to answer written questions from the audience, and those viewing on TV are invited to email their questions to r.dunlap@slp.org. Views in this forum are those of the candidates. Sponsorship of this forum by the League of Women Voters is not an endorsement of any of the candidates. Since 1919, the League of Women Voters Minnesota has served as the cornerstone of some of the most important nonpartisan work across the state. We educate, empower, and engage Minnesotans to have their voices heard. We never support a candidate, and we never will. The league is growing. Membership is open to men and women. It's a great way to connect to the community, to learn about political issues and political processes. Now is a good time to be part of the conversation. There's membership information on the table back by the refreshments. We encourage all of our league members, and we encourage each of you to become active in the political party of your choice. For more information, you can go to, on the web, www.lwvmn.org, and click on the link to the local leagues, or www.lwslp.org, and that's our local site. Tonight's moderator is Marty Mix. She's a member of the League of Women Voters Golden Valley. So as we turn our attention over to Marty, if you could just take a quick moment and check to make sure that your cellphone is on silent. Thank you.
Hello, it's awesome. I'm Marty Mix, and I'm the Golden Valley League of Women Voters. I'm the moderator of tonight's forum for the school board district.
Marty, is your mic?
It'll show light up green. All right. I'll be the moderator for tonight's forum for the school board, District 283 of St. Louis Park. There are five candidates for the three, four-year seats on the school board, and candidates will make opening statements in alphabetical order. They are Jim Benneke, Christine Johnson, Bruce Richardson, Karen Waters, and Jim Yarosh. There's only one candidate for the two-year seat, Ken Morrison, and since he's running unopposed, he was not asked to participate in this forum. His representative may be available following the forum. Tonight's candidate questions include written questions from our live audience. Those viewing this forum on cable TV, Channel 17, may submit their questions via email to r.dunlap@slp.org. Written questions from the League of Women Voters of St. Louis Park are also included in tonight's forum. We'll be using a timekeeper, so everyone has the same amount of time to respond to the questions. Can all the candidates see the timekeeper and the stop? What the stop one looks like? Where we just see the thirty? What does the stop one look like? There we go. Okay. We'll begin with the candidate opening statements. Statements will be given in alphabetical order and limited to two minutes each. We'll be alternating candidates alphabetically, so each gets to respond first to a question, and each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond to the questions. For right now, we will go with the opening statement, and we will begin with Jim Benneke.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum, and I'd like to thank the audience for attending, both those here in person tonight and those watching from home. I'm running for school board, basically because if I have one passion, it's the public school system. I support parents having choices for education, but I think in the end, only the public schools can guarantee equity and opportunity for everybody. My wife and I, Linda, moved here 20 years ago because of all the wonderful things we heard about the community, and chief among them are the support the community has, where they try and, you know, support the welfare of every single child in the community. I've been an active volunteer in that time. I'm currently vice chair of the Community Education Advisory Council. I'm also currently vice chair of the Park and Recreation Advisory Council. I've served on the district strategic planning committee these last few years. I've been taking part in other community organizations, one notable one. It's been a new sight lately. I'm a member of Safety in the Park, the group concerned about the freight trains. The qualities I think I bring to the school board are that I'm a deliberative and open-minded decision-maker, that I treat all people respectfully, and that I value their opinion. I have several goals that I hope to discuss tonight. Chief among them is, I'd like to build on the success as the school district has had, and not only lower the achievement gap, but totally eliminate it. I believe we could be the first school to accomplish that with all the energy we have around here. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Johnson.
Hi, I'm Christine Johnson. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event, and I'm running for school board because I'd like to see the education of all students in St. Louis Park, from elementary on up to seniors. When I chose to move to St. Louis Park, I researched the different school districts and what they had to offer, and I chose to move to St. Louis Park because of the IB and the outcomes that I've seen, and the diversity. I am a foster parent in Hennepin County. I've adopted two children, two children of color, so the achievement gap is something that I'm very concerned about and do want to see eliminated. My son goes to Aquila, and my daughter will be two on Saturday. I've volunteered in a couple of different areas. I've volunteered for the Minneapolis Police Reserve as a reserve officer, and I've also volunteered for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I am committed to working with the children, working with kids, and ensuring a high-quality education. I look forward to, if elected, to working with the board and helping with what we've already got in St. Louis Park. I, like I said, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Bruce Richardson. Bruce Richardson.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Richardson. I also appreciate the league putting this on tonight. Thank you very much, and appreciate all of you who came out tonight and the people on TV. I've been on the board for 12 years. I've been a resident of St. Louis Park for 32 years. Both of my children are St. Louis Park grads, and my wife is a teacher. She's taught in the district and in a couple of the surrounding districts. She has a master's degree in reading education. When I first got into this, I said, "What I don't know about education, I just can go home and ask Audrey," and I have done that over the years. My vision for the St. Louis Park schools is pretty much all about leadership, vision, and funding. What I see is that the board has provided great leadership for our district on the 12 years that I've been on it. I've shared this time with Jim Yarosh, and I've appreciated the board. It's a wonderful board, good people to work with, and that's been a lot of fun. That leadership goes right to our superintendent, and we've hired one of the best people I know to do that, and Rob Metz is a fantastic superintendent and follows a long line of those kinds of people. My vision for the district is expressed in our strategic plan. I've been instrumental in helping to build that plan with Jim. I've worked on the core team, and a number of people here have worked on the core team, and it's been a fun time for me. And then, the funding. The referenda that we have out there is important to get those three parts passed. I also serve as vice chair of AMSD, and that is an organization that talks to the legislature, and we try to get more funding, and we actually had a little bit of success this year, and that's unusual with our legislature. So that has been good. I'm also a member of the board of the St. Louis Park Public Schools Foundation.
Thank you. Karen Waters.
Good evening. It's an honor to be with all of you tonight. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this candidate forum, and thanks to all of you who are here tonight. I'm Karen Waters, and we bought our house in the park 20 years ago because of the reputation of our schools. We have four kids learning and succeeding at the senior high and at the middle school. We invested in our home because we wanted to stay in the park. I filed as a candidate for St. Louis Park School Board because I believe in our community and in the power of public education to transform lives. We all know that strong public schools enhance all of our property values, and that we're blessed with the school district that shares a geographic relationship with our city. I believe in the philosophy of children first: your kids, my kids, and our kids. And I try to live that out every single day when I have the chance to interact with kids in our community. I've been a classroom volunteer, as well as a district and community volunteer. I advocate for public education at the state level as a volunteer with Parents United. I'd like the opportunity to go further with this work as a member of the St. Louis Park School Board. I would appreciate your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim Yarosh.
Nothing like having a Y to just have your last name. Good evening. My name is Jim Yarosh. I do want to thank the league and all the work that they do in helping promote good and fair and open dialogue in elections, so thank you. I am running for reelection in my fourth term in the St. Louis Park School Board, and I've enjoyed my time immensely. I've been on for nearly 12 years, and I've been a chair of the board for three of those years. Just a minute about my family. My wife Julie, who's always my biggest supporter, is here, and my daughter Sophie, who's in eighth grade at the middle school, and I have a daughter at Susan Linger Elementary School, Sadie, and I have Arnie, who's not quite yet to the schools, but he's in community education and preschool, so. I was born and raised in this district. I benefited from this community and the opportunities that have been given to our kids, and I'm proud to and honored and privileged to have served it for 12 years in the capacity that I've had on the school board. It's a remarkable and engaged community, and it's no surprise that I ended up back here, so, and I'm happy to do it. You know, just thinking about the district and the 12 years, I mean, we've had so many accomplishments, and I think we're in just such a great place now, and that optimism, and that's really what drives me. I just want to see it continued and enhanced. I mean, every one of our schools is full. We have a fund balance. We have new, excited leadership at the top. We're innovative. We have a, we heard last night at a board meeting about something that was started here that's going nationwide to help students increase, or schools increase graduation rates. This is all really exciting stuff, and I've enjoyed being a part of it, and I'd love to continue. So, you know, and just a couple other things, you know, we also had a science technology or a technology event this Saturday, and what we're doing in the classroom is amazing things, and I think we can even do better. So I'm running for reelection, in part, as if you can't tell, as I have a great passion for public schools, and in this district in particular. I believe the knowledge and experience that I've gained over my 12 years provides great stability for the board, especially at a time when we have new leadership. And I see I'm running out of time, so I will just say, I'll just end it here, and thank you for allowing me to participate tonight.
Thank you very much. Well, now we begin the question and answer period, and you can continue to turn in questions. You'll have a minute and a half to answer them, and we will begin the first question with Christine Johnson. So here's the question. It's been suggested that Park Spanish Immersion is being run like a private, private, let me get my glasses on here, academy within our public school system. Where do you stand on the issues of Park Spanish Immersion, or PSI?
It's part of the public school system, and everyone should have equal access to the Park Spanish Immersion School. I need to look actually more into the enrollment and how people do get placed into the Spanish Immersion School.
All right, thank you. Bruce Richardson.
Could you repeat the question?
Yes. It's been suggested that PSI is being run like a private academy within our public school system. Where do you stand on the issues of PSI, or Park Spanish Immersion?
Questions of PSI have been addressed by the board over the years. PSI is a tremendous asset to this district.
The question PSI has been addressed over the years by the board. PSI is a tremendous school and a tremendous asset to this district. In addressing where I stand on that issue, we have put together a district that has four elementary schools, and PSI is one of them. The other three elementary schools are international baccalaureate primary years programs, and they are certified. Our middle school is also a middle-years program, IB-certified program, or they're working for certification, and the high school's a diploma program. That series of elementary schools gives us a balance where everybody has choice. The students there are selected by lottery, and some people feel that's not the way to do it, but we have stayed with that program, and we are increasing our number of students of color, and the balance within PSI and the other schools is improving. That was one of the reasons for that comment.
Thank you. Karen Waters.
Thank you. So PSI is one of our elementary schools, and it is an innovative program, and in our district, we have many innovative programs. The lottery system is part of the policy of the board. They are keeping seats for some different demographics that are not well-represented. It's a complex issue. I know that you have to make a real commitment to that program because of the nature of immersion language acquisition. I think it's great that we have kids who go through it, and at the end of their high school program, we have some kids who have finished their third year of college-level Spanish, and it goes to opportunities. It would be great to ensure that we have opportunities for all of our kids to reach their highest level and capability, even, you know, wouldn't it be great to have an ELL kid get to their third year of college-level English? But I think if we keep focusing on what's not working about it as opposed to what is working about it, we're not serving all of our kids well. So, does it need some tweaks? Sure. Do all of our programs need tweaks? Yes, they do, but it's a process. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Yarosh.
I don't agree with the comment that says PSI is not a private school. It's one of our public schools. There is a lottery to get in, and it's oversubscribed. It's very popular. It's a very successful school, and it does, it is part of our innovation. We were one of the first districts to have an immersion school, and it's been modeled after by many other in the state, and it's been a big success. And one of the reasons it was started, actually one of the primary reasons it was started 18, 15, 17 years ago, is because we were losing families. We were losing families out of the district, and this was a way that we experimented, and we kept people and families in the district, and has continued to do that. And I believe that while occasionally there had been, there was some issues with certain classes at times, that together, when all these kids stay in the park and end up in high school, I think it's a benefit for all the kids, and they, and all staying together and keeping kids in the district. So I don't agree with it. I think the board's worked hard to try to solve some of the unintended consequences, and as shown by some of the policies we've worked on in the last five years, I think some of them have been more successful than others, and it's an issue that we need to continue to watch and manage. But again, I think it's been an innovative and a good school, and not a private school. Thanks.
Thank you. Jim Benneke.
I agree that the Spanish immersion program has been an asset to the school district, and it's been a very innovative program. I've been part of some of the efforts to strike a balance over the years. I've been on a couple committees, like the Equity and Excellence Task Force that looked at their admission policies. So I think we've all worked hard to strike a balance. I know some would like to go further and maybe expand the enrollment. I would look at that. I'd have to be first convinced that we could keep a nice balance equity-wise first, so. And I will say one thing further. One thing that kind of saddens me is that it's been, one of the issue, main issues have been kind of divisive in this community the last few years. You know, the non-PSI parents worry about equity issues, and the PSI parents think they're being blamed for being a successful school system. I think one of the most important qualities a school board member can have is just to keep the dialogue open and keep things respectful and keep people talking. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will be, begin with Bruce Richardson, and the question is, "Please tell us what you see as the role of community education in St. Louis Park?"
The role of community ed in St. Louis Park, there's a thing that we say, it's really from birth to the end, is where community ed fits in. What we have done over the years is both from early childhood education to the senior program that we have, to all of the courses that we offer, and we offer hundreds of them. It's a powerful program within the park, and I think one of the most important parts of it is it keeps the entire population of St. Louis Park involved in our schools. And I think that's the thing about it, that when we look at lifelong learning is part of our mission, and when we debated how we included community ed within our mission, there were four key areas that community ed addresses, and it's all about learning, and it's all about staying fit and keeping yourself as part of the community. And the last part that got hotly debated was the spiritual nature of our community ed, and I thought that was a wonderful part of the debate because it keeps people involved and working within our community and keeps those spirits up.
Thank you very much. All right. Next will be Karen Waters.
Thank you. I believe community ed is really important. I have benefited from it from the beginning. We have a senior in high school, and we're still friends with people that we met in ECFE classes. And lifelong learning is important. It is part of our core value as a school district, and we do want everyone to be engaged in every part of their life. Just last winter, I took an online course, just to have the experience of doing an online course through Ed2Go. I think it's great that we have opportunities for all sorts of learning, whether it's academic in nature for our adult learners who need that in order to be successful, but it's also just good for enrichment, whether you're in an after-school program if you're a school kid, or an evening program if you're a family, or our senior citizens who have so much to contribute to our community and the vitality of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we'll find a lot of disagreement here. It's, the role of community ed is to educate and engage our community, and, you know, we have these buildings, the kids are in them during the day, and the extent we can use them, all the better. It's, they're public assets, and they ought to be utilized and used. Lifelong learning is real in St. Louis Park. We've, again, talk innovative, talked to the older guard here in St. Louis Park. St. Louis Park was on the forefront of starting community education and lifelong learning. And it's really important for the school district because it does, as others have mentioned, that it really engages our adults, our seniors, in the community system. It gets people out interested in what's happening in the buildings and with the kids, and it's important to, for a tight-knit community that supports and values education and grows its kids.
Thank you. Jim Benneke.
Yes, community education is not often associated with the school board, which is unfortunate. It is a central part of the strategic plan and the mission of the school district. I think community education is vital. It draws the community together. It also allows us to get community support. You know, one statistic you hear is only 14% of households have kids in the K-12 program, so this is, you know, a way to involve the rest of the community in that. I've worked on community education. I'm part of the Community Education Advisory Council at the moment. I've also served on the Recreational Task Force Committee for the city, which is considering what new facilities we might need. Even though we have a wonderful community education program, some of the facilities are getting a little outdated. It might be nice to have new facilities for such classes as, like, you know, cooking and yoga, so I'm hoping, you know, something can be done there. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Johnson.
I think community education is very important for lifelong learning. I think getting people to get back into their GED if they haven't gotten that, if they haven't graduated. English as a second language, ESL classes. Helping parents of kids that have maybe come from another country learn what their kids are learning. I think that's very important to continue. It's a lifelong process. My kids have been involved with early childhood intervention, and it is lifelong. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, and we will begin with Karen Waters, is, "Since the state will be paying schools the funding that they owe, do you think all three referendums are needed? Please explain your answer."
Yes, we need to pass all three. And the reason is, and I have been looking at public education funding for a long time. That's one reason why I actually paid money to Parents United for Public Education to be a volunteer advocate. When you look at the state commitment to our school systems, it's been flat, or nothing, or minimal. I think two years in the last 10, we had a couple of 4% increases, but they don't tell you those 4% were offset by decreases in other areas, so you still net out at zero. Nobody's budget is immune from paying attention to all your pennies and nickels, but the state and the federal government put an enormous number of mandates on our local schools, and the state has not kept balance with funding like it should. And I think they realize that. I think that's one reason why they changed the law recently, to let communities like ours go out for some more money because they know they're not keeping pace. So yes, we need to pass all three. I was on the Vote Yes 2008 Committee when we passed both of those questions, and I fully support the Vote Yes Committee right now. It's part of our investment in our kids and our community, and it all makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Yarosh.
Yes, thank you. Let's, the first part of the question is because we're getting, the school districts are getting their money back, but all that really was is just a shift in state aid payments of timing and where you get it. So a lot of schools had to borrow money until they got what was owed from the state. We did borrow a little bit, but we were fortunate to pay it right back because we had a nice fund balance, which really helped us out. So the premise that we're going to get some money back, I don't think is accurate in the sense of how does it affect the referendum, but I do support all three referenda, and that is because, well, one is a technology levy that has been there, in place for 14 years. It's set to expire. Anyone who's interested or invested in education, I don't think would doubt the idea that we need to get more technology in the classrooms, and that takes money and it takes educating our teachers. So we need to pass the tech levy. The other things are, we talk about older facilities, it's just one of the things, we're not funded appropriately to maintain our facilities. So every four, five years, you have to go out, and that's our capital bond referendum. You have to go out to fix the buildings, roofs, parking lots, none of the exciting stuff, but that's necessary to maintain a safe and healthy environment for our students and our community. And as part of that, too, we also need small, little additions onto our classrooms because they are at capacity, and we have the ability to offer all-day kindergarten now, which wasn't available before. So we need the extra space. And finally, while we do have a fund balance, we've had to dip into it the last couple years, and this last leg, part of the referendum will allow us to not have to continue to do that.
Thank you. All right. And Jim Benneke.
Yes, as Jim mentioned, the other Jim. It's not really new money that the state is providing. Maybe the schools will save a little on some interest on the money they have to borrow, but it's not really new money. Maybe the schools will save a little on some interest on the money they have to borrow, but it's not really new money. And I, I support all three levies. I can't imagine what will happen if at least some of them fail. If the, like, the building levy fails, I don't know how they're going to, you know, cure the overcrowding in the classrooms. And I don't know how they're going to have the classrooms to provide all-day kindergarten next year. So I'm not even sure what Plan B would be there. The tech levy is just a renewal, pretty much renewal of the current tech levy. Without it, I don't know how we, you can continue to provide, you know, all, all the tech services that we provide and quality programs. So I definitely support all three.
Thank you. Christine Johnson.
And I do too support all three. I think we need to keep the classroom safe and expand as the, the schools expand and the technology to keep it up with what the other schools are having. When I did hear about how much the school board wanted, it was kind of shocking, but I was also, it was helpful to see how they broke it down and how the actual payments would be per homeowner per year. It's, it's not really that bad after I looked at it. I do support it because my kids are in the schools and I do want to support the other children in the school system. And I do think it's a good investment.
Thank you. Bruce Richardson.
The money that the state is paying back in the shift is not a windfall. It's just paying, they're paying back what they owe us. And therefore, we did borrow short-term in order to get it paid back or to get us through the, the gap that was created by their holding back the funding. So it's nice now that we have the money and that's powerful. I also support all three referenda. It's very important that the technology levy pass. A number of us were over at the Technology Fair at Aquila this past weekend. And seeing what our children are doing with technology is absolutely amazing. It's powerful. And when you see the learning that's going on enhanced by our technology, it's worth the money. The other thing is, is this operating levy will help keep our classes small. That's part of what that is for. It'll help keep our programs going and the board and the administration have initiated some great programs. Finally, our buildings. It's already been mentioned about the classrooms. We have almost a million square feet of roofs and parking lots in this district. They need to be maintained and some of our buildings are quite old and we need to make sure that's taken care of. And so I think it's very important that all three of these levies pass.
Thank you very much. Jim Yarosh, you will start the next question. Here it is. Could you give your views about achievement gaps in St. Louis Park and what is being done or can be done to narrow them?
Well, start with that. From a board perspective, the first thing you have to do is you have to put the right leadership in, in place. And I think we've done that with Rob Metz. I think he's, he's been a proven educator in, in, in showing improvement with the achievement gap. At Aquila, he's, he made some significant gains that weren't necessarily, that were not predictable. That, I will say, was one of Rob's big things when we selected him as a new superintendent. He made it clear that St. Louis Park, if the achievement gap can be, if that gap can be eliminated, that it's, it's, St. Louis Park can happen, having this children-first community and this philosophy. And so I think it starts with leadership and setting the right leadership. And, and we've done things, again, this innovative spirit that we've had. You know, last year we, we learned, we have classes where kids who are struggling with math were put all together and kind of team learned. And we're going to hear results on that. So I think we, we are continuing to try. We did have the highest graduation rate, or second highest, I guess, in the state, at least last year, of black students. Percentage of graduates, I think it was like 80%. And so, but again, from the board perspective, I think it starts with getting rid of obstacles, selecting the right leadership. And I know we've aligned our standards, so people are going to be judged on how well they're working towards that goal of eliminating the achievement gap.
Thank you. Jim Benaki.
Yes, along with our new superintendent, I also believe that the achievement gap can not only be reduced, but eliminated. I don't think there's one magic bullet that's going to accomplish this. You have to continually analyze what works and what doesn't at all levels. Some key, key components of that are a strong preschool program, of which we have. We're one of the few districts of state that has this like four-star rating that allows us to give extra scholarships at the preschool level. Effective early reading intervention is important. Individual attention to students and, and mentoring is important. And I think also one thing that's important to close the achievement gap is helping each student find their spark, something that they can find mastery in. Which is one reason, so I hope over the long term, you know, one part of that would be like to increase like the arts curriculum. That might be, you know, one thing that certain students could excel at. So I believe we have the energy around here to do it. We've had some successes. Jim already mentioned having the second highest graduation rate among blacks, so that's an accomplishment. We have a ninth grade program, mentoring that's been modeled by a lot of other schools. Last year, we tried to also do that in 10th grade and maybe we'll also be doing that in 11th and 12th grade.
Thank you. Christine Johnson.
And I'd like to look at what has already been accomplished in trying to close the achievement gap. I think early intervention would be helpful in, in closing that gap. Involving family in the child's education and figuring out where things are with, with what's, what could possibly be a barrier to the achievement. Is it because, is it, you know, English as a second language, is it, you know, is what could, I mean, it could be many different things. It could be. So I'd like to actually research more of what has, they've looked at and expand on what they've already done.
Thank you. Bruce Richardson.
Could you repeat the question one more time?
Yes. Could you give your views about achievement gaps in St. Louis Park and what is being or can be done to narrow them?
The board has taken a position for many years. In the time I've been on the board, it's one of my chief goals to make sure.
The board has taken a position for a number of years and it's been one of my chief goals that the achievement gap needs to be closed. We've made some progress in that area and we've done that principally by aligning our goals of getting the leadership of the district to align its goals to make sure that our students, the barriers are taken down and the opportunities are increased. Let me say a little bit about what I mean by that. When Rob Metz took over as a principal of the high school, we had no black students taking AP or IB classes. We now have over 200 students of color taking over 400 AP and IB classes and they're getting college credit for that. That's taking down the barriers. That's what's so important about the leadership that we have in our district. Now, aligning those goals with our new superintendent, it's being aligned from the board to the superintendent, from the superintendent to the principals, and we're working to have it aligned all the way down through the teachers. This is an adult thing. This is about teachers, teaching teachers and people understanding where we, where we are going with this. And it has been incredibly successful. I think our bar program, the ninth grade program, has been a powerful program in our district and it is now going nationwide. And what that, what the bar program means, it means building assets and reducing risk. And that building of assets for those kids and taking down the barriers, that's what it's all about. And we're having success in closing it up.
Thank you. The achievement gap is not just a St. Louis Park problem. It's a state problem. It's a nationwide problem. And we know about it because of No Child Left Behind, which you could also equate with No Child Left Untested. So are we in the business of having to teach to the test? I think for a few years there, we were. But we have a new commissioner of education who's taken a long, hard look at what is really effective. And we have a district that also has taken a hard look at what's effective. We've got Frida Bailey working very hard on what specifically can help close the achievement gap. We now have Carrie Ross on board and she's going to help align our curriculum with the standards so that all of our kids can be successful. We have pockets of success, but we also need to do more work in all of our areas so that all of our kids have success. And I don't think it's just teachers getting more professional development. I think it requires some additional input from the community. You know, we've got 61 K through three classrooms. Wouldn't it be amazing if we could have 300 volunteers every single day, every single classroom, listening to kids read, helping kids who don't speak the language get better acclimated? Because they're not getting the support at home, they can't. But those things that can make a difference, that can help us move the gap to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, and we will begin with Jim Benaki. As we have added grades to the IB program, how do we evaluate whether it is successful and a good use of resources?
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. As we have added grades to the IB program, how do we evaluate whether it is successful and a good use of resources?
All right, I assume you're talking about the, the PYP program in the elementary and middle schools.
Yes, yes.
At first I was skeptical about the program. It, it does cost a fair amount of money to train the teachers in. And I was worried it could be a trade-off between that and, and class size. But we've managed to keep reasonable class sizes and implement the program. And I've become quite a believer in the program. I think the program, you know, allows the students to be kind of active participants in their, in their education. It teaches academic, social and social skills. It synthesizes knowledge between disparate things like math and the arts. And it develops leadership skills and interpersonal skills. So I can't at this point say enough good about it. How we evaluate if it's working or not? Part of that will come from the International Organization itself. You know, they will evaluate your program periodically. And I, I think you just have to look at, you know, the new type of things that the students are doing. You know, the interdisciplinary approaches and to issues and just kind, you know, see what they're doing.
Thank you. Christine Johnson. Sure. Could you repeat the question?
Sure.
As we have added grades to the IB program, how do we evaluate whether it is successful and a good use of resources?
Looking at graduation outcomes, testing, talking with the teachers and students and seeing if, what they, they value what they're learning. That's part of the reason I, when we moved to St. Louis Park is because of the IB. And learning the leadership skills and I, I just think that looking at the outcomes of graduation.
All right, thank you. Bruce Richardson.
I've said it before and I'm going to say it all night. I'm a big IB proponent. I have been so from the beginning. When my son left the high school, he had enough credits to start college of us as a sophomore. He assured me though, he was still going to stay in college for four years, which he did. I think that's one of the reasons is, is the IB has shown that from the early grades all the way through now, we have a successful program where the kids take it step by step. And the way I know it's successful, the test scores show it, that's number one. But there are two other very, very important things. First of all, if you've ever been to one of their presentations in their fifth grade year and watched these fifth graders give their expositions and they talk about reflection. And when they say reflection, they look up and they're thinking and you can tell they're thinking. And I love to watch that. I watched some kids giving a presentation on world peace. It was phenomenal. The next is keeping people in the park. I used to hear people say, well, if I don't get into PSI, I'm going to leave St. Louis Park. They don't say that anymore. Our IB program has kept people in the park. And when people have choices between PSI and IB, I see them going both ways. And I think that's the important part of this program. And watching these students progress has been fun.
Thank you. Karen Waters.
Thank you. I have been a longtime supporter of IB, starting with PYP. I was part of the site council at Peter Holbar when we were talking about making the transition to that. I'm thrilled beyond belief that we're building it at the middle school because it, it's the piece that was missing with the high school program. IB gives kids the ability to master critical thinking skills, starting in kindergarten. And the way our world is now, we have to have all of our learners mastering critical thinking skills. The other thing that I like about IB, really, it is a market differentiator in our community. We compete with the private schools. We compete with some programs in Minneapolis, Edina, Eden Prairie, Hopkins, Minnetonka. We have people who can travel and they do. But IB makes people take another look and then another look, especially when they see the progression. The, the international organization, and I've sat in on those evaluator team meetings, they look at every single detail of how we implement IB. And we can't be named an IB school unless we satisfy all those requirements. And our staff is committed to doing what it needs to take, to do what we need to do to, to make that happen because they have seen the difference. I've seen the difference in critical thinking skill development with my sixth grader who has had IB from kindergarten. There's a difference with my 12th grader who did not. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Yarosh.
Well, I don't think there's too much dispute about IB at the high school. It's been there for a long time now. It's been proven. It's one of the more rigorous curriculums. We offer both with IB and AP and the school and the credits. And, you know, I think it's, it varies, but, you know, we get maybe nine to 15 kids a year who are achieving a diploma. We offer it broader, other students can take it. So at the high school, I don't think there's much debate about the rigor. And if you get that IB certificate, how much that means and all the college credits you'll have. So I think that's how you measure it, at least at the high school level. And then just drilling down, I agree with, you know, it gives each school a focus. It's got that international awareness and mindfulness, the inquisitive aspects to it, the forcing the kids to speak and communicate, give presentations. I've witnessed those as well. They're, they're amazing. And so, but you do then, you measure it, but anecdotally, on what teachers are telling us about and our administrators, our educational experts. And also you look, you have to look at test scores, but also just witnessing and seeing what happens in the classroom. And another thing that I've learned from talking to our leaders is the professional development that you get from it is, is invaluable. So the training they get is good, whether it's for IB or for any other type. So you measure it on all those accounts. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Christine Johnson. What do you believe should be done to prevent bullying in the schools? What is the current policy and does it adequately address this issue? Is the Anti-Bullying Task Force effective?
Could you repeat that one more time?
Sure.
Thanks.
There's a lot of question there. What do you believe should be done to prevent bullying in the schools? What is the current policy and does it adequately address this issue? And is the Anti-Bullying Task Force effective?
Well, policy is that there shouldn't be any bullying and, could you, I, could you repeat one more time? Sorry about that.
What do you believe should be done to prevent bullying in schools? What is the current policy and does it adequately address the issue? And is the Anti-Bullying Task Force effective?
To prevent bullying in, in schools, I think requires education on what it, it does to people and, and to children and to kids. I'm not sure that the, some students or people understand the effects of bullying and what it can lead to. So I think the first would be, would be educating on what, what bullying can do. The policy, I like the policy of no bullying, but I think the, there should be the education piece on why, how it affects people. I think most kids, if they knew what it was doing to another person, would probably choose not to bully. And I think that it should be continued to be something that's discussed through the schools.
Thank you. Bruce Richardson.
For the past year, I've been on the Anti-Bullying Committee at PSI. Each of us on the board have a school and PSI was my school. And so in working with the committee at PSI, it was really a wonderful experience. And to listen, to get together with the And to listen, to get together with the educators and see how they wanted to do it, listen to the parents to see how they wanted to do it, and then bring all those thoughts together to work the process. And that's what I enjoy, and I especially enjoy about St. Louis Park, because we work the process here and people talk. So how do you do it? Well, you educate. You bring people together. You talk about it. You don't sweep it under the rug. Every year, when we go and talk to our students at the end of the year, we, the board takes time and talks to our high school kids. And what we find is that our high school, there is very little bullying. The program that was started in the high school, the kids created the word "upstanders." Don't be a bystander, be an upstander. And when the kids come up with that particular message, I think that says a lot about how our kids act and how they do things, and they look out for each other. And we find that every year.
Thank you. Karen Waters.
Thank you. So St. Louis Park actually has a pretty good policy on the books related to bullying compared to a lot of other districts in the state. But the reason we wanted to work collaboratively with the city's Human Rights Commission, and they were the ones who approached the District Parent Advisory Committee about this issue, is it's become an epidemic in our community at large. I think a lot of you are aware that there were a number of suicides in the Inoka-Hennepin County School District. So there's been an awareness that it is a problem. It's a problem that is compounded by the use of technology in people's homes and on the bus, which is not necessarily able to be monitored in school. So the key thing is, we've got a good policy, and we want to focus on educating kids how to be an upstander, and not necessarily find ways to penalize people, but to keep the focus on how do we show respect for each other. And it starts in kindergarten, when we do our hopes and dreams, and we have responsive classroom, and we do that K through 12. So I'd say the task force has been very effective. I was on the task force for almost the past eighteen months, and we've done a number of things in the community to start the discussion. You know, we talk about the ABCs every year. We'll be talking about how to be an upstander every year. It's just part of the conversation as we educate the whole child in our community. And HRC is going to take it further into our community because it's not just a school issue. Thank you.
Jim Yarosh.
Right, and right at the end, Karen was getting to it. It's really, it's a societal issue. It comes up from, you know, what's happening at home. And again, the key is educating our kids and creating the right environment, which we have been trying to do with responsive classroom, where the kids come in and have morning meetings and shake their neighbor's hand and ask how they're doing. And it's creating that, forcing kids to learn about others. And hopefully, if we can foster that environment as they, as they get older, they'll be willing to become upstanders, where standards where they're the ones who are kind of enforcing the behavior of each other and calling it for what it is, where it's, instead of, you know, flicking your friend in the back of the head, someone calling out and saying that's bullying. And so I think the kids are getting the vocabulary, the knowledge. That's what we're trying to do it, but it's important for, for a board and the policies we create to just try to create the right environments so we can educate our kids properly so they can have better behaviors and at least call their peers out on it. So I think, as Karen said, our policies are there, but we, the implementation is obviously the tough part, and it's not just the schools, it's got to come from home as well, so.
Thank you. Jim Benneke.
Yes, the school district has had a tough anti-bullying, what do you call it, strict on the books for quite a while, one of the strongest in the state.
Policy.
Policy, there you go, that's the word. But you can never do too much about bullying. I can't think of anything more damaging to a student's self-esteem to be bullied. And also, there are, you know, new forms of bullying, you know, cyberbullying, that we need to react to. I support building on efforts to train teachers to recognize and deal with bullying, and I support more efforts to support the students who are bullied, and remediation for those who do bully. And I think what's really important and what's been valuable about the Anti-Bullying Task Force is the idea about the students themselves taking ownership of it and being upstanding citizens about it.
Thank you. The next question. It says, "You discussed classroom sizes, building decay, but last year, the incumbents voted to put in a new football field. What's up with that?" So we'll begin with Bruce Richardson.
There are lots of things that happen in a school district. Football is one of them. The, there's a, you've probably seen what's going on now with the head injuries and everything else. There's a lot of criticism of football. However, it's part of our program. It's part of all of the schools in, in the state of Minnesota and throughout the country. It's one of those things where having an environment, a safe environment is one of the things. And grass football fields were not as safe as turf fields. We spent money to make sure that our kids were safe. We spent money to ensure that not only did the football, the football kids get to use that field, but the soccer kids, the lacrosse kids. This football field is multi-use, and in fact, it's being shared with the community. And so it has opened itself up to be a vital asset. Now, when we speak to the classrooms, that's a whole other issue. And building our classrooms and making sure that we have the correct space for our students, all-day K requires extra classrooms in each of our schools, and that too is a priority. So that builds that environment for our schools, both football fields and classrooms.
Thank you. Karen Waters.
Thank you. So I don't really like to think of it as just a football field. It's a stadium, and we have graduation there. And as Bruce mentioned, it's football and soccer and lacrosse. And that stadium is one thing that gathers our community together. You know, people are fighting really hard to keep the freight trains out of it, and for good reason. It's not easy to have graduation in the gym. But we want to have ways for kids to be engaged in their school, and it's not just academics. A lot of learning happens in the arts and athletics. And having a competitive advantage in the marketplace requires that you make an investment from time to time in your facilities. I'm not sure about you all, but I've waited for a long time to use the porta potty on a cold night in that stadium. So I supported the turf when that question came up. In terms of the classroom sizes, the thing that's difficult about school financing and budgets, there's lots of different pots of money that the state says, "You can spend this amount on this, this amount on this, and this amount on this." And when the state said, "You can now offer all-day K," you know, as a district, we could say, "Oh, we're not going to do it. We can't afford the classroom space." But then, we're at a competitive disadvantage with all the other districts and private schools around us who do offer it. So you have to balance all of those different entities and make the best choice for the entire community. Thanks.
Jim Yarosh.
The stadium turf, it's a community asset. It's not just for the schools, it's for the whole community. Youth sports use it. The problem is, we don't have a ton of green space in a fully developed city. And so here is an asset. It's a green space, but it was getting used seventeen times a year. The football teams weren't practicing on it. They only would play their games, boys and girls soccer and some lacrosse. And graduation, I think that totaled about seventeen or eighteen times. We weren't getting our bang for the buck for the green space that we need. And with the increase in female sports and the youth sport, and the introduction of lacrosse, our turf space at all the other facilities were ground down where it was like dirt and mud. So this was a necessary community asset. And so, and I think it's paid off over time and just the use it's getting. I think, boy, we had used it more in the first three weeks, I think, of when it was fully open than we did all the previous year. And so, and in terms of competing funds, the funds that we used to pay for the turf does not compete with the class sizes. So that was not an issue in terms of competing funds there. But I think that was a wise move, and I think it's shown to be that.
Yes, if it was just a question of upgrading the athletic facilities, you know, I'd say forget it. But it did seem like the stadium hardly got any use. There's just a few drainage problems. So now, as has been mentioned, it, you know, sometimes it's a safety issue. At the very least, so it's a community asset. It's an asset for youth. I think sports can be, you know, one of the assets for youth. It gets plenty of use now. Some of the uses are renting out for community groups, so we do get some money back for it. So I think it was a good decision.
Well, I wasn't on the board for that decision, but it, if it was a safety issue, I'm glad that they made the decision that they did. And now that there's more community use, I think the investment will come back. And it sounds like it's been widely used, so, and I do think that the safety of our kids and having more regular turf versus non was a good investment.
Thank you. Our next question, and we will begin with Karen Waters. How can the school board evaluate the quality of the educational experience of St. Louis Park students K through 12? Sure. How can the school board evaluate the quality of the educational experience of St. Louis Park students K through 12?
That's a big question. We have great schools, and we know it from test data, because we're required to do test data. But we also know it from the way that our kids engage with their learning. You heard a little bit about the fifth grade IB exhibition process. It's a culminating event at our elementary schools. We have so many opportunities for kids to show what they know, whether they're performing at a high level in their music classes, whether we have kids competing at History Day and then going to Washington DC for national competition. We have kids at the high school in the DECA program who compete at a high level. So I think there's multiple ways of showing that we are successful, and we don't want to just rely on the test score because our kids are so much more than just one test score on one day. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Yarosh.
So how to evaluate the quality of educational experience? One, you obviously have the objective data that we have to always look at, and that's, you know, a lot of cases, the MCAs, our graduation rates, our NWA's, I think, are important. How are each kids, each kid progressing from grade to grade? But, and anecdotally, what kind, we ask our kids, what kind of education are, what's the climate of the high school? So we hear back from them. And as a board, you got to engage and do that and ask questions. You talk to parents. We give surveys at a number of our schools. How many kids like their teacher? What do they like? Do they like their school? Do they feel safe? Another, where do our kids end up going to school? What is the percentage that go on to some schools, to a post-secondary school? The interactions among each other, you know, we have a pretty diverse school district, and how are we getting along? How do they get along? We hear about that, we see it, we ask questions. And then the student involvement. I think, you know, that's the beauty of St. Louis Park. We have, you know, we live in this big metropolitan area, and yet we have, you know, relatively small class sizes, somewhere between 275 to 330, I think, over the range that I've been on. And it gives each kid an opportunity to be involved in, if it's, you know, more than one sport, if you want to do the theater. So I think we measure it by the involvement and the activities of our kids. And we regularly get updates on how many kids are participating in various events. So there's just a number of things you need to look at, and I think we do fairly well.
Thank you. Thank you. Jim Benneke.
Yes, I think a large part of the strategic plan, a lot of us worked on here, includes, explains how we should measure success. One of the strategic objectives was to increase our data gathering capability, and we've done that. Each objective in the strategic plan is supposed to be measured, and that's part of the strategic objectives. One of the strategic objectives was to develop something the administration can use called a balanced score sheet, where basically the goals are kind of kept on a chart, and you track weekly how you're doing against those goals. And also, we do student surveys, you know, how fulfilled they feel and how successful they think their education has been. So I think a lot of the things, a lot of that, we're doing well already.
Well, I think, looking at the outcomes, the tests, graduation rates, talking with teachers, talking with families, students, and just evaluating all of the above, and challenge, and to accept a challenge if things aren't, if the outcomes aren't happening, and look at different areas if the quality of education isn't there. But I think mainly looking at the outcomes and surveys and talking with the kids. My son loves going to school, and that's, that excites me that he loves learning, and it's part of St. Louis Park schools that are doing that.
Thank you. Bruce Richardson.
I had to laugh when I heard Karen speak because I was, I had already written down, "There's the test data, but our kids are so much more than that." And they are. Look at what they do. You want to see what our kids are all about? Go to a band concert. Go to one of the plays. Go, just go to a sports event. Go to our state championship swimmers and just watch what these kids do. They are wonderful. Band, orchestra, choir, robotics, the Echo, an award-winning newspaper, nationally recognized. This is exciting stuff. These are exciting kids, and they're doing really well. We've mentioned the graduation rates. Think about community service, what they do in their community, and that's part of our objectives, is to make sure they're out in the community and serving the public good. Look at the colleges they get into. Not only colleges, but tech schools, other things that they do. They're doing wonderful things out there. And then they continue on. They come back and they contribute. St. Louis Park grads even serve on the school board. And that's really, that's really a good thing, to show the love of this community for the schools. Strong schools mean a strong community, and that's what this school board is all about.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Jim Yarosh, and that question is, "What are the top three challenges for the St. Louis Park school system?" Again, what are the top three challenges of the St. Louis Park school system? Or fourth, the St. Louis Park school system?
Top three. Well, one is what we've already talked quite a bit about. It's trying to eliminate, reduce and then eliminate the achievement gap. There is no magic bullet. It's not an easy fix, and we've all talked about it, and it's, we got to dedicate some time and some effort. And I think with our new leadership, that we're going to, we're going to see some progress. So that's definitely number one. Two, I would say, would be integrating, continue to integrate technology into the classroom. How do we improve education? And that can also help with number one, by the way. The better we do about integrating technology will help assist in eliminating the achievement gap, I believe. And finally, we got, I would say, at this point in time, the next, the third challenge with about thirty seconds of thought on the question there, but would probably be getting our middle school straight, getting a coordinated middle school. I still think we're struggling to find answers. I think we have a productive and good middle school. But after we closed Cedar Manor, you know, which was, all things considered, a relatively smooth transition, at least year one, but as things kind of developed, we've kind of, I think, hit a little bump that we got to iron out and just figure out, what does a six, seven, eight middle school look like? I think we got seven and eight down pretty well, and we're still trying to search for the answer on how to integrate six into that. So that would be the top three.
Thank you. Jim Benneke.
Yes, well, the top challenge is probably funding and money. I think what we need to continue to do is lobby the legislature, whether we're school board members or not, it's a big priority. Over the short term, we just have to keep thinking about, you know, what grants that we can apply for. And I think to apply for grants, we just have to keep being innovative, because I think money, you know, follows innovation. I also like, you know, look, I think we should also look for you know, look, I think we should also look for ideas that we can do that don't cost a lot of money, that further our goals. I was impressed what they did in the 10th grade this last year, where they're trying to get team teachers to have a chance to evaluate students. So they didn't have to pay for extra teaching time. They would just, you know, start the schools a couple days a week later. So ongoing, that'll hardly cost any money at all. So we need to, you know, keep thinking of those kind of ideas. Oh, that's only one idea. The second one is the achievement gap. We've already talked about that. And I think the third one is that we need to review our curriculum, just to make sure that we're staying innovative and effective. I think maybe there's still room for more technology offerings at the high school. Maybe there's room for different options at the middle school, or we just kind of figure out more what we're doing at the middle school. And...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Christine Johnson.
The, one of the three challenges is the achievement gap, which was already discussed, and then providing support to teachers through technology. And so, and financially, I, some teachers are spending some of their own money for things in the classroom. And so, looking at the expenses that the teachers have. And then looking at grants, state and federal grants, that might help fund some programs and help the school district, and maybe lower the cost to citizens of St. Louis Park.
Thank you. Bruce Richardson.
I think there are the three major things. Number one is leadership. We went a long way in hiring Rob Metz as our superintendent. That's important. But continuing to support Rob with a board that has clear vision and continues to move forward. This board has made a lot of progress. The people who work on this board have done some wonderful things, and we need to continue that and support the leadership of the schools. Also, it's not just one person who's the leader within our schools. There are staffs, and principals, and teachers, and these people need to step up and be leaders, too. They have done that. We support them, and I think that's always a critical point. The second is the vision. Continuing the vision, continuing the strategic plan, absolutely crucial to our district, not to lose any steps there, and to have the kind of community input that we have continued. And I think that our community supports us, and that's a lot of fun. The final thing is funding. And the only reason I put it third is because the leaders can do so much, and they have done so much, even with declining funding. But now that we've picked up a little bit more, that's really important. To do that through the Public Schools Foundation, to continue to do that from the legislature and others, that's what we need to do, is build those funds and invest in our kids.
Thank you. Karen Waters.
Thank you. Well, we've already talked about the achievement gap, and that is the number one issue that we have to attend to. And I think we're working on it, and I think we have more to do. I, too, think funding is a really critical issue. The state and the federal government are not keeping pace with what the needs are. And we are successful going after grant money. And I think we need to look at our strategic plan, because once the grant money runs out, how do we sustain things that we really like and want to keep? Is there any more room in the general fund to fund it? No, it wasn't there in the first place. We have to be really thoughtful about how we go after grant money and what the purpose is. And finally, I think there's a whole array of things that we could talk about, but our community is a first-ring suburb. And we owe it to our property owners to be a competitive school district. And we are in competition with a lot of private schools, the charter school movement. And we need to maintain our innovation. We need to make sure that we have equity and opportunities for all of our kids. And I think we need to do more to foster additional partnerships and collaborations, so that we can, as Bob had in his book about the Silver Tsunami, we have an incredible resource here with our senior citizens, who could partner with us in our schools to help all of our kids learn and achieve. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have one that's, if we could just maybe have shorter answers on that, would we be able to, yeah, okay. What's your position on trains next to Park Spanish Immersion and increased train traffic next to the high school? It was alluded to earlier in one of the candidates' comments, so I was just curious if we could, about a minute? Okay. So we'll start with Jim Benneke.
Yes, I've been a member of Safety in the Park for quite a while now. I've, I think it's unacceptable to have the trains next to Spanish Immersion, both for the safety issue in and of itself, and plus it would eliminate the playground there with no hint to where the playground is even supposed to go. And I think the additional traffic by the high school would just cause too much disruption, and there's possible safety issues there, too. And depending on which plan you're looking at, you know, some would cut through the middle of the football field. And I mean, no matter how you slice it, it's just a horrible idea. And I've been active on this issue. I've written letters to the editor, and I've blogged about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Christine Johnson.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah. What's your position on trains next to Park Spanish Immersion and increased train traffic next to the high school?
I think there's a lot of decision-making that needs to happen, and a lot of looking at the different plans. I think that it, it's going to happen, but it's where it's going to happen. I don't, I don't know. But I think the least, just, I think that where we look, I think looking at where it would have least impact on the schools, and least impact on the people of St. Louis Park. I think it's going to happen, but how it's going to happen, I don't know.
Thank you. Bruce Richardson.
I've been writing letters since 2008 on this issue. People know pretty much where I stand on it. It is totally unacceptable to run trains either through the playground at PSI or through our football field. We do not intend to let that happen. We will do everything in our power to fight it. We have done that. We've spoken. We've written letters. It's, the number one issue in this whole thing is the safety of our children. And as I look out on the children that I see out here, we're just not going to let this happen. We can't let this happen. You cannot put a berm with a train on top of it, running by PSI, the high school, or any of our schools. It just should not be done. It's not right.
Thank you. Karen Waters.
It's ridiculous to put freight trains through our football field and next to a park. When that plan was even floated, I thought, are they crazy? Really? Who in their right mind would think this would be a viable option? But the administration, and the board, and the city council, and Ron Lats, and Steve Simon, and Ryan Winkler, they have all worked in collaboration together, advocating for our schools and our community that this is not the right solution. Right now, it's out of our hands. But everybody at the Met Council knows where St. Louis Park stands, and I stand with them. It's a ludicrous idea, and the safety of our kids and the learning environment is, it's much too important. I don't know if you heard, Governor Dayton decided we're going to table the question for two to three more months for more exploration. So we wait. But our position isn't going to change. It's the wrong plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Yarosh.
Yep. Strongly opposed to it. The board, once those eight plans came out in March or May, and, you know, three of them, or two of them through, or I guess it was three through St. Louis Park, we were actively engaged and opposed. And the board is on record, writing letters, and doing what we could as a public body on behalf of St. Louis Park and our kids. It's, we asked the question at one board meeting, they couldn't come up with one example of an elevated freight train near a school in the country. And so, by asking probing questions, by being out front on this, writing letters, we've shown our strong opposition to this. And, but we're not out of the woods yet. As long as this decision's hanging out there, any one of these plans could come back, whether it's through our football field or right next door. So we have to remain vigilant.
Thank you so much. Now, we're at the closing comments portion of the forum, and we will begin in reverse alphabetical order. So Jim Yarosh, you will be first. And this is one and a half minutes. One and a half minutes for each candidate.
Great. Thank you very much. I hope throughout, you got to learn a little bit about us. I want to thank the audience, and the audience at home, and the audience that'll continue to watch this in the future until Election Day. Thank you all for your attention and interest in public schools. It's really appreciated. It's what St. Louis Park is. We have a lot of support. We've accomplished a lot during the last 12 years. When I first got on the board, we had a fund balance of about $90,000. Now we have approximately $4 million. Moody's just, the other day, two days ago, I think, upgraded our bond rating. So only 11 school districts in the state are in better position than St. Louis Park. And that has significant economic impact for us, as we hope to find out when we go to refund our bonds to save our taxpayers' money, and we get a better interest rate because of it. We've accomplished IB K through 12. We're almost certified at the middle school. We'll have them all certified K through 12 here shortly. We went through a difficult closing school process, and it was quite a challenge. But I think we're much stronger for it, as both as a community, and as I stated, we're just in a great place now as a school district. If we get these referenda passed, I just, there's a lot of optimism, a lot of good feeling for the school district. I've gained a great deal of knowledge and experience the 12 years on the board. I think I understand the role of a board member very well, and I think that's an asset for the district and our new administration. Rob's a great leader, but it helps to have the consistency of those who hired him.
Thank you.
Oops, sorry. Thanks.
Karen Waters.
Thank you. Thanks again to all of you. We have a great community. We have great schools, and I envision that that support is going to continue. I believe that my experiences as a classroom volunteer, and a school volunteer, along with my service to the district through D-PAC, the Strategic Core Team, the City School District Anti-Bullying Task Force, as well as my work as a community volunteer, will best serve the St. Louis Park school board. We do have some critical issues to address, along with some finite resources. And I believe that my perspective can help our district focus on what truly benefits all of our stakeholders, our students and families, teachers, and staff, and community. Please vote for Karen Waters on November 5. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize to, I apologize to Jim Yarosh. I didn't realize the candidates were told that they were going to have two minutes. So you have another half minute. So...
Well, just get out the last words then. I think experienced, trusted leadership, and good decision-making skills are essential to being a good school board member. I believe I possess those qualities, and I would ask for your vote on November 5. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies. And Karen Waters did get her two minutes? Okay. Bruce Richardson?
Thank you all. I appreciate everybody here tonight. It's great to see some of those smiling faces out there. We are a mission-driven board. That's what we do. I have supported our mission for the 12 years that I've been on the board, and that is, we want to create a safe and caring environment for all our students. They can't learn if they don't feel safe and feel loved. We want to engage our students in rigorous academics. If they don't have these academics that are rigorous, we have failed in what we're here to do. And finally, we need to ignite. We need to get, let those students go out there and let those sparks fly. And that's all learners, not just the kids, but our ECFE, our, from babies on up, all the way through our senior learners. That's what we want to do, is ignite everybody in this community. I've tried to bring leadership to the board. I've attempted to provide my vision through the strategic planning. I've worked hard to add funds to our schools over the years, and support our teachers in everything that I could do to make that happen. I ask for your vote on November 5. I ask you to support Bruce Richardson. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Johnson?
I want to thank the legal women voters and the audience for watching. And I want to be part of this great school district at a level where I can make a difference. I'd be a new, fresh face to the board. I fight to find answers to questions, I think, outside the box. I listen. I think St. Louis Park is lucky to have five people that want to be on the board, and that you've got choices. But vote for me, if you'd like, on November 5, for Christine Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jim Benneke?
Yes, thank you. Thanks to the audience for all the thoughtful questions. Some of the values I hold most dear are compassion, opportunity, and community. I believe we must all be guided continually by the principle that all members of this community deserve the opportunity to succeed. I would bring to the board my broad experience. There's very little aspect of the school district I haven't worked with. I also have a lot of work, experience working with kids. I've been, you know, I've coached soccer, I've coached a Lego League robotics team. I've been a leader in the YMCA boarders program. So I've also done a lot of work directly with kids, too, I didn't mention in my introduction. I think I would also bring a collaborative approach to the board. I would foster an approachable reputation by always being respectful and working closely with everybody, you know, welcoming their opinion, encouraging their opinion, speaking directly and always to the point. And I would always follow through when an issue is brought to me by a constituent. Thank you for your consideration. Maybe I'll just quick mention my website, too, jimbenneke.com, if you want to learn more about me. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, it's been a pleasure listening to the views of all the candidates for the St. Louis Park School Board Forum. I can tell that they have a passion for the school district. It's a pleasure to listen to all of your viewpoints. I also want to thank the audience here, and those at home, as well as Reg, who's been trying to keep us on task here for turning on our microphones. And I'll pass this over to Deb Brinkman, and then we'll be applauding at the very end.
Thanks, Marty. We appreciate your moderator, your being a moderator here again for us tonight. Reminder that tonight's forum is going to continue to run on Civic Channel 17 until the general election on November 5. If you've moved or changed your name, remember you're going to need to re-register, or register to vote in your precinct. Polling places are on the St. Louis Park website, if you're looking for that information. Absentee ballots are now available from the city. If you would like one by mail, simply call the city clerk administrator at 952-924-2503. Absentee ballots must be received no later than the day of the election. There are still some refreshments on the table, so as we adjourn this evening, please feel free to take a pass by the table. And lastly, please remember to make it a priority to vote. Thank you, and have a great evening.